It is 7:02, September 25, 2017. I'll call this meeting to order. A couple minutes late. Please rise with me for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the roll, please, Terry.
Counselor Hamilton.
Here.
Counselor Hodges.
Here.
Counselor Thompson.
Here.
Counselor Triglia.
Here.
Mayor Peiper.
Here.
Forearm present.
In ceremonies, looks like we're getting caught up here on yards of the month to mention. So, we have June Residential is John Moore, 604 Pacific Avenue for Yard of the Month. June, the Commercial Property of the Month is Curry Medical Center up on Fifth Street. July Residential is Michael and Tiara Hamilton of 855 Crestwood Place. And the commercial for July was Westwood Inn on Chetco Ave. August Residential is Joe and Debbie Hodges. That was a good one.
Yeah.
And the August commercial is Black Trumpet Bistro on Chetco Inn. And just this month, Joan or Joanne, Joan Young, on South Paisley. We're gonna move into E, Public Hearings. And councilors, I don't remember the last time we did one of these. So, we have a script that we kinda go through to make sure we get all the nuts and bolts. Public hearing is open at 7:04 on September 25 in the matter of file number CP-1-15, considering adoption of revisions to the City of Brookings Comprehensive Plan Goal 12 Transportation, adopting a new transportation system plan that City initiated. The criteria used to decide this matter is found in Chapter 17.140 Amendments of the BMC. This is legislative hearing, and City Council will make a decision on the matter. Does any council member have an exparté contact to declare?
No.
Does any council member have a personal bias or personal interest that would preclude participation for this hearing?
No.
Does any council member have a potential or actual conflict of interest? Does anyone object to the council's jurisdiction to hear this matter? Before we begin, I'll review the guidelines. First, we will hear from staff, then proponents, opponents, and interested parties, in that order, may speak to the council. All speakers must state their name and mailing address. Council may ask questions of the speaker, after which staff will be given the opportunity to make further comments. Council will then discuss the proposal and make a decision. All testimony and evidence must be directed towards the proposal at hand. We will now proceed with staff support.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In 2002, the City of Brookings adopted their transportation system plan as the transportation element of the city's comprehensive plan. The 2002 transportation system plan established a plan for transportation facilities and services to meet local, regional, and state needs, and provided direction for allocation of resources to various types of transportation projects. The update to the City of Brookings Transportation System Plan is an important, long-range planning tool for Brookings as it prepares for future growth in the community and the region. The Cities of Brookings, in conjunction with the Oregon Department of Transportation, initiated an update to the city's transportation system plan in 2013. The Transportation System Plan guides the management and implementation of the transportation facilities, policies, and programs within the City of Brookings urban growth boundary over the next 20 years. The purpose of the Transportation System Plan is to provide guidance for the following: It is a blueprint for transportation investment, a coordination tool with regional agencies and local jurisdictions, an important component of prudent and effective land use choices, and answers to existing future transportation needs related to bicycles, pedestrians, transit vehicles, freight, and rail. The Brookings Transportation System Plan was guided by a project management team, technical advisory committee, and a citizen advisory committee. The project management team comprised the City of Brookings staff, Oregon Department of Transportation staff, and consultant staff. The technical advisory committee consisted of key stakeholders, agencies, including the City of Brookings, Curry County, and the Oregon Department of Transportation. The citizen advisory committee comprised local stakeholder agencies, community leaders, local business owners, and residents. In addition to the committees, the Brookings City Council and Planning Commission provided guidance and ensured that the needs of the people of Brookings were incorporated into the transportation system plan. The project management team, the technical advisory committee, and the citizen advisory committee devoted a substantial amount of time and effort to the development of this transportation system plan, and their participation was instrumental in the development of this document. The consultant team and the project management team believe that the City of Brookings' future transportation system will be better because of their commitment. The new transportation system plan and US 101 corridor plan are presented to the -- were presented to the City of Brookings Planning Commission at their September 5, 2017, meeting. The Brookings Planning Commission recommended approval of the transportation system plan and the proposed revisions to Goal 12, Transportation of the Brookings Comprehensive Plan. That is all.
Thank you. Does anyone wish to speak in support of the proposal? Can you just state your name and your address, please?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm Tom Guevara with the Oregon Department of Transportation, 3500 Northwest Stewart Parkway, Roseburg, Oregon. I'm here to support staff's recommendation for adoption. I was the project manager on the TSP and the 101 corridor plan, so I'm here to help answer any questions you may have.
Questions? No?
I don't think we have any. I don't.
I know, I recognize you sitting back there.
Alright, thank you.
I couldn't quite remember. Thank you. Does anyone wish to speak in opposition to the proposal? Any interested parties wishing to speak? I guess we never -- staff further comments or council questions to staff? No continuation. It is now 7:11. The public hearing is closed. Council will now deliberate. Councilors?
I don't have anything to deliberate.
We talked about it at workshops and every workshop.
Yeah, it's just basically moving some cleanup language, so...
I don't have anything. We have a recommended motion there, which I would entertain as soon as...
I move to approve the adoption of changes to the Brookings Comprehensive Plan Goal 12 Transportation and adopting the Transportation System Plan, including the US 101 corridor plan, ODOT, that ODOT produced on 2016, hereby adopted by reference and direct staff to draft the adopting ordinance.
Second.
Call the question, please, Terry.
Counselor Thompson.
Aye.
Counselor Triglia.
Aye.
Counselor Hodges.
Aye.
Counselor Hamilton.
Aye.
Mayor Peiper.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And E2 is Legislative Public Hearing for some street standard BMC code revisions. Again, this is Legislative Public Hearing in the matter of LDC-1-17, and it's open at 7:12 PM on September 25, 2017. The purpose of this hearing is to consider revisions to Chapter 17.170 Street Standards of the City of the Brookings Municipal Code, City initiated. The criteria used to decide this matter is found in Chapter 17.140 Amendments of the Brookings Municipal Code, adopt the Transportation System Plan, update and revise Section 17.170 of the Brookings Municipal Code. This is a legislative hearing, and the City Council will make a decision on this matter. Does any council member have an exparté contact to declare?
No.
Does any council member have a personal bias or personal interest that would preclude participation in this hearing? Does any council member have a potential or actual conflict of interest?
No.
Does anyone object to the council's jurisdiction to hear this matter? The guidelines of the testimony, this is gonna sound familiar. The guidelines for presenting testimony and participating in this hearing are as follows: First, we hear from staff, then proponents, opponents, and interested persons, in that order, may address the council. All speakers must state their name and mailing address. Council may ask questions of any speaker. Staff will then be given the opportunity to make further comments, and council will discuss the proposal and make a decision. All testimony and evidence must be directed to the proposal at hand. We will now proceed with evidence, starting with the staff's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, the Transportation System Plan update requires that the city adopts several changes to the Land Development Code, including changes to definitions, code section numbering, and street standards. With the proposed adoption of these updates, the Land Development Code will more accurately reflect the Transportation System Plan updates. These proposed changes were presented to the City of Brookings Planning Commission at their September 5, 2017, meeting, and the Brookings Planning Commission recommended approval of the proposed changes to Brookings Municipal Code, Section 17.170 Street Standards. That's all.
Any questions for staff? Does anyone wish to speak in support of the proposal? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition to the proposal? Are there any interested parties that wish to speak? Any further comments, staff?
No, sir.
It is now 7:15. The public testimony portion of this hearing is closed. Council will now deliberate. I don't have anything, council.
I don't have anything to deliberate, but maybe, just so the audience knows what some of this is, it kinda sounds confusing, maybe a little bit hard to follow along, but some of it, not all of it, is as easy as removing a definition that's no longer valid in their code, or adding some verbiage that wasn't in there, or a new word like multimodal, multimodal. I haven't used that before.
I've heard that one.
It's a good word to have in there now. So, there's not that much to deliberate on, so...
I'd entertain a motion.
Sorry, I lost my place. I move to approve revisions proposed by the LDC-1-17 to revise Section 17.170 Street Standards to include updates proposed with the adoption of the Transportation System Plan, update and direct staff to draft the adopting ordinance.
Second.
Call the question, Terry.
Counselor Triglia.
Aye.
Counselor Hodges.
Aye.
Counselor Hamilton.
Aye.
Counselor Thompson.
Aye.
Mayor Peiper.
Aye.
Motion carries.
F, oral requests and communications from the audience. I have one that's not speaking to an agenda topic. I'll double check there. Mr. Gordon Clay. Name and address, please.
Gordon Clay, CitizensWhoCare.org, Brookings, Oregon, P.O. Box 12. Mayor, Councilman, and guests. Thank you for proclaiming September as Suicide Prevention and Awareness Month and October as Bullying Prevention Month. This is still Suicide Prevention Month, Awareness Month, and as you may have seen, this flyer around town, and maybe in your mailboxes, we have a symposium that we're putting on at the Curry County Library on this Saturday from 3:00 to 5:00 PM. It's called SOS, A Symposium on Suicide, titled "Breaking the Silence." We're trying to end the stigma around talking about suicide, so those that are in crisis will know that it's safe to come out and talk and get help. Right now, when we're all quiet about it, they don't, and it leaves Curry County ranking number one in the state as for, in 2015, for total suicides, and number three in the state for suicides of 10 to 24-year-olds per capita. The purpose is to bring 10 stakeholders that hold a piece of the suicide puzzle in Curry County together, to outline the issues, educate, provide awareness, and prevention information to the Curry County community. I hope everyone in the community will join our panel, as they are an important part of the solution. Come and learn why you are important and what your part is to play. October is Bully Prevention Month. Bullying has become an epidemic of epic proportions. StandForSilence.org has a list of over 55,000 children who have taken their lives in the last seven years due to bullying. That's one child every hour for seven years. Over 32 million students are victims of bullying each year, or six per second. Adult intervention, only 4%. Pre-intervention, 11%, and the rest, 85%, no intervention. Nationally, more than one in every five students or 25% or 20% report being bullied. That's in Curry County, that is two to three times that number. According to the 2016 Oregon Wellness Survey, 55, 53% of sixth graders, 57% of eighth graders, and 39% of 11th graders agreed with that they were bullied, and this was just the 30 days before the survey, not over a year's period of time. Kids who are obese, gay, or have disabilities are 63% more likely to be bullied than other children. Music and theater, students face a significantly greater risk than non-art's peers. One in 10 students drop out of school because of repeated bullying. Harassment and bullying have been linked to 75% of school shootings. And there's actually, we don't read about it, but one school shooting a month in the United States. And every 30 minutes, a teenager attempts suicide due to bullying. For those who immediately went to challenge the numbers and sources, what if the numbers are accurate? Do you remain skeptical? For the numbers aren't fabricated, especially the healthy teen and wellness surveys, since so are the students that are explaining their experience. Let's do what we can to reduce and better yet eliminate bullying in every aspect of our community, which in itself will help us get to the goal of zero attempts. I hope to see you all this Saturday at the Chicago, at the Curry County Public Library. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. May I share?
Three to five.
Alright, we're on to G, Staff Reports. And number one is the Oregon Parks and Recreation Grant Agreement. Mr. Barron.
Mayor Peiper, members of the council. Phase three of the four-phase Zalea Park Ball Field Reconfiguration Project includes the addition of field lighting to all three fields, as well as parking, parking lot curving, paving, striping, scoreboards, bike racks, and picnic tables. Phase one and two are currently under construction and fully funded with a combination of city and grant funding. In 2015, the City of Brookings received 212,000 and change grant from Oregon Parks and Recreation Department for phase one. In 2017, the City of Brookings was awarded a $166,300 grant from Regional Solutions for phase two of this project. Work associated with the grant for phase three would occur in fiscal years 2017, 2018, 18, 19, and 1920. Staff proposes to pay the matched participation from the capital reserve fund to be continually funded through annual transfers from the general fund over the course of the fiscal years.
Questions for staff, councilors?
No questions.
I'm sorry. Tony, would you like to read the background discussion part? Which tells what the phase three is?
Phase three is, phase three is, the project is field lighting. It includes field amenities, for example, scoreboards. It includes one of the parking lots, the parking lot of Lundine Road, that'll be paved. Currently it's gravel. We're trying to move towards paving or gravel parking lots. And it has, it also includes bike racks. Some of the amenities you can see in a park like this, including a picnic area, is also included in this.
Okay.
That's what's included in basically.
Thank you.
Is it that entire gravel area going to get paved, or just a portion of the...
A majority, a majority, I think, let's say 95% of that gravel area will be kind of paved, parking lots.
Comments, councilors?
Oh, it's good to see this project coming together. It's actually been a good-sized project, the parks.
Well, it seems like they've all, it seems like we talked about the ballfield reconfiguration projects for a long, long time, and then once it kinda got going, they've all just kinda fallen into place, so...
2008, 2009, when this project began.
Yeah. Yeah, cool. I'd entertain a motion, councilors.
I move to authorize the city manager to enter into a grant agreement with the Oregon Parks and Recreation Department for Azalea Park Ball Field Reconfiguration, Phase Three.
Second.
Call the question, Terry.
Counselor Hodges.
Aye.
Counselor Hamilton.
Aye.
Counselor Thompson.
Aye.
Counselor Triglia.
Aye.
Mayor Peiper.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And G2, Azalea Park Ball Field's Reconfiguration, Phase One Parking?
So, Phase One, as I mentioned before, was also funded through Oregon Parks and Recreation Program for local government grant, for 212,128. Phase One included a restroom concession building, sports storage building, backs on dugouts, and paving the entry drive connecting the now current gravel parking lots from Lundine to the gravel parking lot. As part of this project is to pave that, so that it's an accessible route, gravel services is considered an accessible route through American Disabilities. So, it's part of Phase One, we're paving that section. Phase Three, of course, where the parking lots will be paved, and we'll look to the future to pave the parking lot. But for Phase One, this is sort of the last, the last project for Phase One that's due to be completed. There's, we're, this project, October 31st, and that's the, the grant. And required to complete the level. So, this is, this is the last piece of that.
Questions or comments, councilors? None? I'd entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to authorize city manager to enter into agreement with Tidewater Contracts to pave the Ball Field entrance and road to part of the Azalea Park Field Reconfiguration, Project Phase One.
Second.
Call the question, Terry.
Counselor Hamilton.
Aye.
Counselor Thompson.
Aye.
Counselor Triglia.
Aye.
Counselor Hodges.
Aye.
Mayor Peiper.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Tony. Appreciate it. G3, Coastal Christmas Funding. This is City Recorder.
Mayor and Council, Kathy Brushears, organizer of the Coastal Christmas Event, has requested funding in the amount of $2,000 to fund the purchase of decorative wreaths and to fund costs associated with the parade and Santa event. This matter was considered by the Tourism Promotion Advisory Committee, T-PAC, at its meeting of September 14, 2017. At that meeting, T-PAC recommended a grant of $2,000 in TOT funding to the Coastal Christmas Event. The city granted $3,000 to Coastal Christmas in 2016. The event had a participation of approximately 360 people, with no way of tracking if participants were from outside the area. The city granted $5,000 in 2015 and $1,500 in 2014.
Say that last part again, Terry, the years and amount granted.
The city granted $3,000 to Coastal Christmas in 2016. The event had a participation of approximately 360 people, with no way of tracking if participants were from outside the area. The city granted $5,000 in 2015 and $1,500 in 2014.
Questions, councilors?
Just one, I don't know, is any of this gonna go in towards tourism promotion, I mean, to advertise? Or does she need it for decorations?
I'm seeing, if you're on their budget that they kind of use to apply with, I see, I see $200 in advertising, that's all.
Well, $2,000's better than $5,000, so I don't have an issue here.
They, I believe they had the parade and the Santa at the park thing last year.
Yeah.
I, you know, usually, things like this, when you're sponsoring events, personally, I look for an event to be sponsored for a short amount of time, and then, you know, I've entertained giving funds for the expansion of events, but not necessarily just to keep the same event going. And I see, you know, the purchase of wreaths. Do you, they didn't have wreaths last year? I mean, are they're not, these aren't live?
These are live wreaths. There was some discussion about whether they should go ahead and purchase fake wreaths as a capital investment. The issue that Kathy Brushears brought up was storage, and that the fake wreaths have a significant price, and there would be a significant outlay to get enough to do all of Chetco Avenue like they do with the live.
Councilors, comments?
Yeah, I have a few in the same vein as what I believe you were talking about. The idea of granting the transient occupancy tax revenue is to bring more people into, at least one of the main reasons is to bring more people in, especially in the off-season. Last year, I remember, when they came, we had a few questions, and the lady who was responsible for Coastal Christmas wasn't here. It said that there is no way to, you know, to track that, and that's a part of what we try to figure out, is how many people are really here from out of town. In addition, I was kind of insulted by looking at their proposal, which is basically nothing, and it says, "Please explain how this event will be sustained after the first year," which gets to your point of how, we already have given them money for three years in a row. By now, they should, they should have undergone, you know, their own fundraising for things, in my mind, at least. I believe, but I'm not absolutely sure, that the event goals were just taken last year from the same, the same thing. So, I'm not really leaning in favor of this, promoting this anymore. It's not because I don't like Christmas, it's not because I don't like how nice our town looks downtown.
Sure.
But, yes, I'm really the Grinch, right. But, I don't know, that's just my feelings. But I, I, I don't know, that's just my feelings.
Other councilors?
Uh, yes, I, you know, are we gonna draw any tourism from this? Maybe, but also look at makes, somebody has to make downtown Brookings look festive. And last year was one of the more festive times I've seen in a long time. And I think these are the people that done a lot of that. I'm not sure the parade does anything, it was pretty small last year, because I have to watch it go by my house. Okay? And it was a bad, I think, weather was not good that day either. But I think we should go ahead and grant, because if we don't, who's gonna decorate downtown? And downtown was very nice last year decorated, was a lot of hours went in to cut the stuff up, but taking it down. It was done in an orderly fashion, didn't stay up there very long after Christmas. Well, that's my two cents.
Uh, I'm a little concerned about the amount of money being spent on advertising, that doesn't seem to be a lot. Maybe, maybe two hundred dollars gets you a lot more than I think, but I, I don't see that. I mean, I helped with, uh, doing advertising for the, uh, Elks Barbecue and, uh, and we spent a lot more than that on advertising to get, you know, that out. So I'm a little concerned about the, the small amount of advertising opposed to all the expense. Five hundred dollars in supplies. I'm not even, I don't even know what that number is. What is that? Eleven oh five on wreaths and, uh, insurance, two sixty-three ninety-seven, is that gonna be coming out of that fund? So. I, I don't know. I do like the streets being decorated, though, it's very nice, so.
I'm with Counselor, uh, Thompson on this a bit. Two thousand dollars is not, I mean, it is a lot of money, but it's not, uh, it's coming out of the TOT funds. And, um, you know, half of this money is on wreaths. You know, if, if a handful of people stop by, have dinner and a movie and grab something to eat here, you know, that's kind of, you know, at least help some businesses out here around that time of year too. But, um, you know, it is nice when your town looks festive and, and kept up, and if a group of people is willing to do that. You know, it might be, um, worthwhile to... The, the other problem is you kind of step on your feet here when volunteers are trying to help out and do something, and then you cut their legs off and say, you know what? All that hard work that you did is really not worth it to us. The idea of doing these things like this, so was to, you know, get Oktoberfest on its feet and have them go out, but I imagine that they'll come back again for another, another round. And I wouldn't blame them for trying to get some money out of the city for whatever fun they got going, whatever event they have going. This one just seems like we have spent, uh, a bit on it in the past few years. I, I think that years ago, the city used to put up all the lights and hang them off the telephone poles and stuff, and, uh, that's staff time, and we would have been well over two thousand dollars in that. So, um, I'm leaning to, uh, to help this thing move along and maybe have our, uh, Promotion Advisory Committee come up with a, uh, some kind of, uh...
You, you know, over the history, it was, uh, Brookings Merchant Association bought the decorations first time. Then the Chamber inherited, because I rebuilt them one, a couple of years in a row and distributed them. Then when that all died, and they put the new light poles in, because you couldn't use the decorations you already owned, the Chamber owned. Then they had to start over again, and so, you know, and I haven't been up and down the coast in a long time on Christmas, but Brookings used to be the saddest place on the whole coast.
Ties in kind of with the Light Festival at Azalea Park too. What I was thinking of is some kind of, I don't know if there's a surefire way to do it, but maybe after two years of, of funding a project like Dennis had suggested, maybe, that line's just left blank. How, how do you see this thing proceeding? Well, we don't, so we're just not gonna fill it out. Maybe there needs to be something on that, like, will we only ask for half the money the next year or something like that, or?
Well, I remember la- last year when we decided, we said we wanted to look at everything over the past few years, which, you know, Steph is prepared and, um, we were, I know your vote was different then, but...
Yeah, yeah.
Terry, I guess maybe I was misunderstanding this. This is Parade and Santa Event, but this is the complete downtown decoration for Christmas?
Mm-hmm.
That's the way I understood it, it was...
So this isn't...
An all-inclusive package. I think they have some of the decor, the decorations though.
Leftover.
Leftover, so this is all one inclusive thing, I did not realize that.
How much did you spend on these flowers we have hanging in baskets here? I think they're beautiful.
Five grand, I think, six grand.
So this is nothing to have compared to what we do there, and...
I think it's about six thousand?
Yeah, so, you know...
Yeah, if, if this, if this is the entire downtown Christmas decorations on the light poles and everything, um, then, then I would say, yeah. I mean, it's, we, we could easily just be contracting that out to somebody, uh, so our city looked festive.
And we'd pay much more.
Once again, you know, I, this would be more clear if there's a little better description of it, but because I, you know, the, the Santa event and the parade was started after they were doing all of the decorations. I, I thought that this was kind of a separate, uh, deal.
Well, the wreaths were all downtown.
It must be.
Yeah, they are.
Over a thousand bucks, you should be able to get a lot of wreaths. All right, well, then, I mean, I can, i- if this is downtown Christmas decoration, all-inclusive, I would agree. If, if they didn't do it, it could be a sad, sad-looking, uh, year, time of the year.
Maybe we could give some of Azalea Park trees a second life as a wreath.
Oh, don't go there.
Thanks, keeping it, keeping it classy. All right, well, we've spoken about it, is there a motion?
As recommended by the Tourism Potion, Motion Advisory Committee, motion to allocate two thousand dollar grant from transient occupant tax revenue to Coastal Christmas Santa Event Parade and Decorative Wreaths.
Second.
Call the question, Terry.
Counselor Thompson?
Aye.
Counselor Triglia?
Nay.
Counselor Hodges?
Aye.
Counselor Hamilton?
Aye.
Mayor Peiper?
Aye.
Motion carries?
Uh, G four, transient, transient occupancy, uh, funding for Travel and Adventure Show, back to Terry.
Mayor and Council, staff was contacted by the organizers of the Travel and Adventure Shows, inquiring about the city's interest in participating as a vendor. Staff was subsequently contacted by Carolyn Johnson of Curry County Economic Development, indicating the county would be interested in pursuing participation in this event if other entities would consider a collaborative effort. Gold Beach City Manager Jody Fritz has participated in this event for several years and already possesses much of the necessary accoutrement to host a booth. She has indicated that Gold Beach would also consider collaborative participation. With the three entities participating, at most, cost to the city of Brookings would be one-third of the three thousand seven hundred and ninety-five dollar booth rental plus three nights accommodations totaling one thousand seven hundred and forty-five dollars. However, Curry County is also seeking participation from the city of Banden and is exploring funding assistance through Oregon Coast Visitors Association. If these two entities get involved, cost to the city of Brookings would then decrease. At the time of this writing, it is unknown what their decision is. On the other hand, if either Gold Beach or Curry County is unable to participate due to funding issues, then the city of Brookings will withdraw its participation as well. This matter was considered by the Tourism Promotion Advisory Committee, T-PAC, at its meeting of September fourteenth, twenty seventeen. At that meeting, T-PAC unanimously recommended allocating funds not to exceed one thousand seven hundred and forty-five dollars from the TOT revenues to participate in the promotional event.
Questions, councilors?
No, not a question.
Just one, where, where would the booth be set up? Gold Beach or?
Oh, no, I'm sorry, it's in San Francisco. Santa Clara.
Comments?
Well, you know, this is why we vet these things through the tourism promotion for T-PAC. And, uh, it's a pretty small price to pay to get some, um, media coverage down there in, in the Bay Area too, to have people come from vacation up here. And if, if the rest of the cities and county are inclined to do the same, you know, it's a pretty small price to pay if we're all going together on it, so I would be looking forward to that.
So, who, who is it that's actually sitting there? No, no, no. This is, this is to, oh, this would be sending you there as, uh...
Yes, as a representative of the city.
The city as a vendor, okay.
Gold Beach and Carolyn Johnson would go, and then if, if Banden or perhaps Dave Lacy want to get involved.
Gotcha, okay. Yeah, no, I'm cool with that, I, the, if the Gold Beach City Manager was sitting there, I'd be worried about a little biased, uh, someone says, where should I visit? Go down and see Brookings, yeah. Uh, okay, I don't have anything else.
Yeah, I'd, uh, I'd say, I think it's a good idea, and it does exactly what we wanted the T-PAC to do, which is get the word out for Curry County. And, uh, we can reach down there, that far and get two or three thousand people to, that may come through there. It's, it's gonna be huge for us if we can put ourselves on the map down there, per se, and tell them where we are and who we are. So I, I think it's a great idea.
It'd be nice, I mean, I, I know how shows like this are, and there's just a bunch of people, but it would be kind of cool to see, you know, even just shorthand notes about just roughly how many people you thought you'd talk to, how many people were at the, you know, to get some feedback from it. Uh, I'd entertain a motion.
I move to allocate not more than one thousand seven hundred and forty-five dollars to participate in the Travel and Adventure Show promotion as recommended by the Tourism Promotion Advisory Committee.
Second.
Call the question, Terry.
Counselor Triglia?
Aye.
Counselor Hodges?
Aye.
Counselor Hamilton?
Aye.
Counselor Thompson?
Aye.
Mayor Peiper?
Aye.
Motion carries?
And G five, the Airport Waterline Extension, City Manager.
Mayor Peiper, members of the council, the city council approved entering into an agreement with Curry County and Cal- or Life Flight for a water main extension and fire hydrant installation to serve the Brookings Airport. The council also authorized staff to solicit bids and quotes. Since McLennan, uh, excavation was on site, they were, and they were just completing the main air, airport project. Um, McLennan agreed to do the work at the same unit cost as the original proposal. Uh, staff recommended, uh, the execution of an agreement or an addendum to the contract with a task order on eight twenty-one seventeen. The project is now complete. Uh, it was also easier to use the existing contractor as we were in the final stages of filing our claim with EDA for reimbursement. We didn't have to vet another contractor to, uh, get qualified. Uh, the final construction was thirty-two thousand, seven hundred and five dollars. Council actions needed to approve the task order with McLennan for that amount. The city's share of the construction is six thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars.
Questions, council?
No comment, though. This was, this is where we all met on site up there and met with the county and...
Yes.
Actually, the first time I can remember in a long time that, um, county and city worked together well to get something done in a very timely fashion with construction season looming and the contract about ready to implode if we didn't get it done, so. Very nice to see that, um, all happen in short order.
I know it was...
And it's completed now, I believe.
Yeah, I know that, that very short, short timeframe there. So it's, that's good, I see, uh...
Thanks, Paul.
Yeah, Public Works Director Paul Stevens back there.
Paul.
So, yeah, this was a good, uh, good deal, because basically, this was, so we got a grant amount to do the big infrastructure project up there. We came in under grant budget and had a little more that we could, um, that we could use for something, so.
And Keller being able to move in there and, and stage up there is a big bonus too.
Anything else, councilors?
I just have one question. The, uh, actual hydrants, now, did they go out beyond the, the building, or are they just directly behind the fence?
Uh, this is one hydrant, uh, and it's just inside the fence, uh, between the clubhouse, uh, also known as the terminal.
Right.
Uh, and the, uh, Cal or Life Flight main hangar.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I just wanted to see where that went, I, I know we had talked about going out a little bit further beyond that building, but that, that's fine.
I'd entertain a motion.
I move to approve the task order for the waterline extension of the Brookings Airport in the amount of thirty-two thousand, seven hundred and five dollars with McLennan excavation incorporated.
Second.
Call the question, Terry.
Counselor Hodges?
Aye.
Counselor Hamilton?
Aye.
Counselor Thompson?
Aye.
Counselor Triglia?
Aye.
Mayor Peiper?
Aye.
Motion carries?
G six, League of Oregon Cities Foundation. This was a letter that I received, um, from the LOC asking for, um, scholarships, you know, to donate money for scholarships for, uh, mayors and, um, I don't believe it's just mayors. For any, yeah, league, training, workshop attendance, things like that. And, uh, so I just kind of forwarded it to Gary, um, so that we could talk about it. Because I, I didn't want to unilaterally throw it in the trash. It's, uh, I, you know, we're not talking about youth baseball, you know? I mean, this is like mayors of cities or councilors of cities that, that their city is maybe, you know, real small and they can't afford to send their elected officials there. You know, LLC has, has scholarships for them. Now, I, I attended the, the mayor's, uh, I attended a mayor's conference and, um, I know that they did some scholarships for, for some other folks there and, and, uh, I mean, I was happy to see him and that, you know, I hope they got something out of it. But it just seems, it seems strange to me to give scholarships to mayors around the state or councilors around the state. But, any other comments? Or any comments? You guys want to sponsor me to do something? Go to Hawaii? Okay. Let's see, Gary, can we get a letter back to him?
The letter would say, no action taken.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Be a short letter.
Is this for Little League? Okay, very good. Yeah, don't worry about it then. So we're moving H, uh, Resolutions. H one, Resolution declaring the city of Brookings a welcoming and inclusive city. City manager, is this going straight to Counselor Triglia?
Yes, Counselor Triglia actually prepared the staff report, uh, and, um, provided all of the documentation, so I defer to, to him.
So Counselor, um, we'll kind of do, you know, because I've got, so I've got three speakers, so you report, I'll ask, uh, questions as if you were a staff member, and then we'll hear from public.
Okay, um, in response to the national discussion on immigration, city councilors may be aware that numerous Oregon communities such as Woodburn, Salem, Tuolatin, Newburgh, Forest Grove, Cornelius, McMinnville, and Monmouth have been deliberating in adopting inclusive city resolutions. frequently by unanimous votes of their, um, respective city councils. As an example, the, um, the attached resolution that I'm proposing tonight, um, was it, uh, I, was used as a model, um, from the Woodburn one, which was adopted by, um, a unanimous vote of the Woodburn City Council on May twenty-second. Um, in terms of immigration, it's critical that any inclusive city resolution contains the city's commitment to comply with ORS one eight one A dot eight twenty, um, which is in, in your packet, uh, which already prohibits Oregon governments from using public resources in the enforcement of federal immigration laws. From a public safety standpoint, it's critical that our residents know that they can report crimes and work with our police officers without fear of being deported simply because of their skin color or language skills. In terms of hate crimes, uh, Oregon already has, um, two primary criminal statutes that address hate crimes and they're ORS one sixty-six dot one sixty-five intimidation in the first degree and ORS one sixty-six dot one fifty-five intimidation in the second degree. Um, the, uh, the chief of police from Woodburn said that hate crimes have a devastating impact on our community and families, but those instigating or subscribing to such crimes can promote further hate-based criminal activity and behavior. The damage done by hate crimes cannot be measured solely in terms of physical injury or monetarily. Hate crimes may effectively intimidate other members of the victim's community, leaving them feeling isolated, vulnerable and unprotected by the law. By making members of minority communities fearful, angry and suspicious of other groups and the power structure that is supposed to protect them, these incidents can damage the fabric of our society and fragment communities. That being said, the police chief continued that the mere mention of a biased remark does not necessarily make an incident bias motivated. Any more than the absence of such a remark makes the incident a non-biased one. Using derogatory or defaming language, although often inappropriate, is probably not unlawful. If a person is a member of a protected class and feels that they have been a victim of intimidation, it's important to understand that law enforcement officers must use probable cause standards to determine if the perpetrator's actions were motivated by bias. The perception of the victim is not sufficient to meet the burden of proof as required by law. In many cases, non-criminal bias incidents are best resolved in a civil court environment. The purpose of this resolution is to reaffirm the city's commitment to providing municipal services in a discrimination-free, respectful, legal and safe manner to all members of our community. In addition, the purpose of this resolution is to encourage residents regardless of their status or origin to feel safe when using local government ser- services and interacting with members of the Brookings Police Department.
Do you wanna ask, uh, Counselor Triglia any questions before I call up? I've got three speakers. You just wanna hear speakers first?
Sure.
Okay. Uh, Lori Stoddard, Stoddard. Stoddard, right? Stoddard, yeah.
Gallo.
Name and address, please. Oh, well, you wrote.
I know, I didn't, that's okay. Hi, I'm Lori Stoddard. Hi, Mayor Peeper, members of the council. I represent a group called Indivisible nine seven four one five. We have about a hundred members. And we learned of this resolution on the website and we are so delighted to support it. Indivisible nine seven four one five has reviewed Resolution seventeen R eleven twenty-two proposed by Counselor Dennis Triglia and we unanimously vote in support for adoption. This resolution, which would declare the city of Brookings to be a welcoming and inclusive city that respects and appreciates all residents, reflects our own mission statement, which is we are as diverse as our earth, seeking common ground as we educate, advocate and promote civil dialogue about human rights, social justice and environmental issues, because united we are indivisible. Indivisible nine seven four one five shares and supports commitments to social equality and justice which are clearly stated in this resolution. Further, we believe that this particular resolution reflects the spirit and attitude of mutual respect, support and caring recently exhibited throughout our catastrophic wildfire. Neighbors and strangers, residents and individuals from various counties and states came together for the mutual goal of saving lives and property. This example has strengthened our city and surrounding communities. The principles expressed in the resolution, which particularly address acceptance and respect for all individuals, will most assuredly have a positive impact on individuals seeking to live and work in communities of diversity and acceptance. This is not only a social benefit, it is economically beneficial, beneficial as well. So indivisible nine seven four one five thanks you for your consideration and adoption of this resolution and the principles that it supports. And do you want this for your?
Oh, for, uh, yeah, you can hand that to Terry. Thank you very much. Uh, Maria Sudeth? Sudeth? Sudeth. Name and address, please.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Um, I think I have a unique perspective. Our family has been here since nineteen seventy-four. We've watched this town grow from no stoplights, no signal lights, one grocery store to a vibrant community that, um, has several businesses, restaurants, entrepreneurs. Um, we've got the, the port activities, we've got so many events, I can barely keep up with them all and participate in them all. So I see this on several different levels. I see it as a celebration of us coming off of the fire as a whole community where voices were honored and heard. I participate in the Curry News and Views on Facebook. Um, I saw civil dialogue in a way that was very inclusive of different points of view. And I also saw the community coming together. I participated in the, the thanking of the firefighters. And there were people from all different stripes, all different walks of life, all different political views, all different ethnicities celebrating our town, showing the best of our town to the firefighters as we supported them. I would also like to say, when you talk about going down to the Bay Area and promoting our tourism, come to Brookings, what could be better than saying we are a welcoming and inclusive environment that is open to all views, all ethnicities, all persuasions in a way that really says, come to Brookings. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Azam Azadidabar? Is that? Yeah, alright.
Yay!
It always took like half a dozen times. I, I practiced before. Name and address, please.
Yes, my name is Azam Azadidabar. Live at one two two three Barkley Lane, Brookings, beautiful Brookings. Um, ditto to all of the support that you heard and I, I would like to, to see this city to be more supportive. Even though, as my friend said, the fire brought us together, so I would like to see that unity continue and grow. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, councilors, uh, were there any questions for Counselor Triglia at this time? I have one. Counselor, would you, an inclusive city, is this, is this a euphemism for sanctuary city?
Excellent question, okay. I, I actually prepared a little, um, a little bit of blurb just about that. Okay, can I just read this? Okay, it will answer your question. Uh, the proposed inclusive city resolution focuses on the city of Brookings' commitment to value all members of the community to ensure that residents feel safe to utilize all city-owned facilities and that city staff not inquire into an individual's immigration status as a condition of providing, uh, city services. The resolution is one more step in communicating with our residents that they are important, they are valued and they do have access to city services. The resolution may be criticized by some who feel that it's largely symbolic in nature and lacks legislative teeth, but I feel nonetheless that it's a message that our community needs to hear. I wanna be clear that the proposed solution is not a sanctuary city resolution, which some cities like Portland have passed in recent months. In my opinion, a sanctuary city resolution is essentially a kind of thumbing your nose at the federal government and indicating a desire to obstruct their ability to enforce federal immigration laws. This is not about that, and I furthermore do not wish to jeopardize federal grant dollars coming to Brookings. Rather, by voting in favor of this, uh, resolution, Brookings would be deemed an inclusive city, not a sanctuary city. Brookings obeys all federal laws, including immigration law. What we don't do is require people to prove their immigration status to live in Brookings. I'm not asking the city to do anything that's against the law. What I'm asking for is for the law to be upheld in ways that are empathetic and loving and keep families together as much as possible. The state of Oregon already requires local law enforcement not to utilize personnel, equipment or monies for the purpose of enforcing federal immigration law codified in ORS one eighty-one A dot eight twenty. However, Oregon state law still allows law enforcement agencies to exchange information with the US Bureau of Immigration's of Customs Enforcement or ICE and other, other federal agencies. If a police officer comes into contact with an individual who is believed to have committed a crime, the police officer would routinely run a criminal check to see if there are any outstanding warrants. If the officer finds that there is an outstanding warrant, the officer notifies the agency that has issued the warrant and that includes notifying the immigration officials if they have issued, if they were the agency who issued the warrant. This is just simply reaffirming the city's commitment to ensure that all residents have access to city services and the ability to participate in the activities of the city and city life. It's a sign of solidarity for the parents of our city, it's a sign of acceptance to our neighbors and friends, it's a symbolic thank you to those who work in our city, and it's a sign of hope for our children and our youth. I urge my fellow councillors to support this resolution and publicly stand together with our neighbors and friends united against hate.
Thank you. It's about the longest answer you've ever given me, yeah.
That's probably the shortest answer I've ever given.
Actually not, yeah. Thank you. Um, so, councilors, open the comments.
Um, no, I have the same, I have the same reservations that Jake had, had kinda mentioned. Um, there's a paragraph in here about, um, immigration and fear of being deported simply because of skin color or language skills seems to be, um, you know, it was, it was brought up. So that was my biggest, um, hang-up with this is I don't, I don't feel like Brookings is unwelcoming or non-inclusive. I mean, everybody's kinda stated that even with the fire, that things have been, you know, very well done, people came together to do this and I don't I don't know exactly what this resolution would do other than show that we respect-
It's just showing that we're, that we're affirming it in writing, basically. It doesn't have any legislative force that we can, that we can-
I'm, I'm not at all, um, in favor of, of, uh, being or becoming a sanctuary city, is one councillor. There's, there's laws for that stuff, but i- if this is more of a coming together of the people of all mix and models.
That's the intention, and in the resolution, it also says that this is, that, that the resolution is intended to fulfill both federal and Oregon law. Um, and, and so that's why, uh, Mayor Peeper's question also about the sanctuary city, um, this is, this is not. The, the, it's usually the, I don't wanna say liberal or conservative, but the, the more progressive, um, thinking cities that go for the, for the extra thing, but in, in my mind, you're, you, you're almost cutting off your nose despite your face if you, if you go that far because you're, you're possibly endangering, uh, you know, grant money from coming in if, um, you know, if the president, uh, issues another executive order or if Congress passes a, you know, legislation, but, but this wouldn't affect us.
Okay, councillor, let's hear from the other two. Counselor Thompson, Counselor Hamilton, any comments?
Well, I noticed that the, the cities are passive, we're all heavy agricultural type cities that have probably quite a large population Latinos in the area. And the Brookings overall, over my long history here, have been pretty lenient on what went on and how things were handled. As long as it's not become a sanctuary city, it's fine with me. I didn't quite understand, I read it twice today.
Brookings has, uh, I think I just read today, it was either a six or seven percent Latino population.
Uh, Counselor Hamilton? Any comments?
I, um, I would just like to know, um, where does this go if, if we adopt this? Where does it go as a staff? Put it in our, our city, uh? How, I'm kinda confused where it goes from here if we, we say yes.
I, whatever happens with resolutions in, in general.
Uh, City Manager, please?
Yeah.
Well, I, I don't see, correct me if I'm wrong, uh, Counselor Triglia, but I, I don't see anything in the resolution that directs the staff to do anything.
I, I had a question about that too after reading this, cause we get resolutions often. I mean, Gordon Clay, who's, has left, but he's, he's came with several resolutions.
Proclamations.
Okay, yeah, yeah, that's a resolution, yeah, that is right.
Um, alright, I guess it's my turn. I, um, I, I think we are an inclusive city and I wanna be and, you know, continue to strive to become even more inclusive. I've never, I've never liked the idea of, of making, um, political statements, um, sitting up here, but, I mean, obviously we're politicians, we make political statements, but joining into it, you know, nationwide politics. And this reminds me, this is almost, you know, this is very close to, I don't remember, maybe it was six months ago now, there was, uh, oh, kind of a craze in Oregon counties, um, asking for resolutions to reaffirm your support of the Second Amendment. And, uh, our county commissioners, um, pretty much just said, well, you know, I take an oath, I took that oath um, and don't really feel the need to make a statement reaffirming that. I'm not, I'm not like totally opposed to it, um, and, you know, if that's, if that's the will of the council, I'll sign that thing and, and, uh, you know, and, and celebrate it even with the rest of the council. I just, we're, we're nonpartisan up here. Um, personally, I don't, I don't feel the need to, to reaffirm, um, any of the things that I already took an oath to uphold. Things like this, like, like passing, uh, reaffirming the Second Amendment, well, that, that comes with connotations attached to it in the same way that, that this would. Um, and I've, I've, would rather, um, not delve into that, but.
Well, the difference is the, the Second Amendment was ratified by six, thirty-seven states. We're talking about just a group of five here. So it's, it's, it's really just, it's just affirming what we're already doing in essence.
I understand that. So we all spoke once, do you wanna go around the table again? Or, I mean, it's, or I'd entertain a motion, but if, if one person speaks one more time, everyone else needs another turn.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Well, you kind of, you, you touched on what I was talking about, but I, I don't want this resolution that, that I, you know, I'm for the idea of it, but it, it has these connotations that are mixed into it that because of that, you're also, um, leaning this way also. And I don't, I don't really want to come off like that. I would, I, you know, I started to say that, I, I always thought Brookings was welcoming and, uh, inclusive, uh, you know, most, that's one of the first things most people say about how great our community is. I don't, uh, but by signing this is almost like putting another street standard into this, not needed, I mean, we already have the, the street's supposed to be so wide, that's why we built it too. And it just seems like we're adding another, um, resolution on top of something else. And I don't know what this, what a resolution is when it's, when it's done and it's been signed and codified by us and it's effective from here on out and somebody looks back and says, um, Counselor Hodges was in favor of, of this, uh, you know, due to this resolution that he signed and, and was leaning towards this, this side of things, I guess. And, and I, uh, I, I already live this way, so I don't, I don't know what, what this is gonna do in the future.
Counselor Thompson, second chance, or a second go-round, or no?
You know, I personally don't think we need this resolution at all. I think this city's always been reactive to people and I haven't heard of, well, maybe I haven't heard of any hate crimes in Brookings. maybe I haven't heard of any hate crimes in Brookings, and I just don't think we need it.
I, I'm trying to think how to put this in better words, my feelings on it. I just, I don't want, I don't want the city council as a whole to be, to be painted with a certain political bent that this would obviously bring with it. As, you know, as if we made some statement or passed a resolution reaffirming our commitment to the Second Amendment, that would obviously come with political connotations to it, and, you know, and, and it's like left or right, you know, sort of, sort of thing, and that's just something that, that I, that we have always shied away from, and I, I mean, even to the point of, you know, it was only this last, oh, the hospital annexation vote, and maybe the last law enforcement levy was the only time in 12 years that the city council ever publicly supported or, you know, opposed something on the ballot. We had, we've, we've always stayed just non-political, even though we're a governing body and politicians.
I don't, I don't have a problem with the council going one way or something on a political agenda. I just, I don't agree with the way this leans, is all.
I feel, I, I kind of feel like, you know, I'm sorry I didn't read enough of this, but kind of feeling that, you know, I'd like to wait and delve into this a little bit more and kind of see where, where things go in the next few days with the federal government, our white, mainly speaking on our White House, in which direction that, that his proposal ends up going, because it's going to change, feel it's going to change some of the stuff that would be in this. And I, I think this is the greatest town I've ever lived in, short of another coastal town I lived in, and, but I, in seventeen, eighteen years, I've never seen any bad violence. Anything that's come into town has been from out of town, meaning car thieves and bank robbers and liquor store robbers and guys that want to rob coffee stores for some reason, but anyhow, but yeah, I, I'd like a little more time before I can make a decision.
Okay, so, do you entertain a motion to adopt the resolution, or, or just no action? Would not adopt the resolution?
I move to adopt Resolution 17R 1122, declaring the city of Brookings a welcoming and inclusive city that respects and appreciates all of its residents.
Motion dies for lack of a second. Assuming that no other motions on the subject. I consent calendar. We have the approval of council minutes for September 11th, 2017, accepting the T-PAC minutes for July 20th, 2017, receive monthly financial report for August 2017, and approve city manager leave conversion. Can I get a motion to approve consent calendar?
Make a motion to approve the second.
Second.
Call the question, Jerry.
Counselor Thompson?
Yes.
Counselor Triglia?
Aye.
Counselor Hodges?
Aye.
Counselor Hamilton?
Oh, sorry. Aye.
Mayor Peiper?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Jay, remarks from mayor and councilors. Councilors?
I would like to make a comment how well the city manager and people handled this go-around of the fire. I think it was amazing how everybody came together and how many hours and stuff they worked together to help the outside agencies.
Well, it's a, it's a good sign that we didn't get a fire report this council meeting. That means that it's, that it's good. Anything else, councilors?
Yeah, I just want to comment on, again, on the grateful.
Hey, can I, can I have the conversation in back, Paul? Did you guys have a conversation? Will you step out, please, so we can finish up?
I just wanted to say that I wanted to reaffirm my satisfaction with all city staff and police and fire, and certainly our city manager, who's gone, in my opinion, way above the call. I just hope that he allows me to lock him out of his office for a couple weeks, so I can have some kind of a vacation, and, but everybody, everybody worked exceptionally well. Also, the things that were under the lines that people didn't see was the fact that we had our local, our transit outfit in town here. Anyway, they were, the drivers came out and helped in many ways to many people. We, we have our buses available for anything that needed to be transported out, or, so kudos to those people as well, because they were on top of it, and kudos to just everybody in general that helped out, whether doing, collecting clothes, or collecting food, or, or giving food to the food bank. It's, it's just a wonderful feeling, it kind of goes in stride with the community, how it comes together and works together very well, whether it's one person in need or 100 people in need. This, this community always steps up and does a great job, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. I don't have the notes from the BCRAA, so I hope I don't misspeak, but just generally speaking, in October, October 5th, I believe, is when we're going to hear the presentation from two different air carriers to replace Penn Air, and then I believe it's October 12th that we're going to have a special meeting to make the choice, which we actually don't choose, it's a recommendation to the FAA, correct?
Department of Transportation.
Department of Transportation. So, that'll be interesting. Hopefully, we can keep flying. Okay, anything else? Can I get a motion to adjourn? Or, Counselor, were you clearing your throat to speak?
No, I said no.
Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Fall in favor?
Aye.
Adjourned at, what is it, 8:21?
I thought the first had a good eye.